Okay, good morning. I wish to call to order the December 13th meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I'll note for the record that both Commissioner Thomas and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room. And with that, we will go to our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to department updates. Let's start with Ms. Kelly. Good morning. You're here in person. Nice to see you.
Yes, good morning. Good to see you as well. So just a few updates. Statewide, COVID cases have seen increases. Influenza is also noted as being moderate in the state of Indiana right now. We do have updated COVID vaccines and still flu shots available through the public health clinic. And recently, we received notification there is a current nationwide salmonella outbreak of Malachita and Ruby brand cantaloupes. So the CDC is recommending to not eat, serve, use, sell, or distribute any of these brands of cantaloupes.
Wow. What were those brands again?
Malachita, which I've not heard of that before, and Ruby.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
And is RSV vaccine available at the public health clinic for those that are appropriately aged?
Yes, so 60 and older. So it does appear that statewide, we are having some struggles with the infant RSV, but we do have the RSV available for adults.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Is there any other department with an update? Morning, Chief.
Good morning. How are you?
Okay. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes here. We were at the council meeting last night, so wanted to stop by and meet with you all today. After the long process that we've been through here, we were able to select and retain a transition team director, and I wanted to come and introduce this person to you and kind of give you a little update about the resume and what he brings to this position. So Cory, if you want to come up here. Commissioners, this is Cory Grass, and this is who the sheriff has tapped to be our transition team director. Give you a little information about his experience level and why the sheriff selected him. The sheriff's going to be here today. He had something come up right before the meeting, so I got tapped to do this again. Ironically enough, Cory started out his law enforcement career as an intern at the Monroe County Jail. So I saw his picture. Apparently, they gave him IDs back then. He looks like he's about 12 years old, but it was really funny to see. So that was back in 1993, is that correct? So from there, he was a police officer with both IUPD and with the Bloomington Police Department. So he has a lot of experience. He lives here in Monroe County and grew up here in Monroe County, went to school, and started out his law enforcement career right here with IUPD and Bloomington PD. And that occurred between 1993 and 2002. From there, Cory went on as a special agent with the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And he was with the FBI until 2022, when he retired from the FBI. But during his assignments with the FBI, he was assigned to Miami, Florida, and then he came back here to Indiana and was assigned to the Bureau of Prisons over in Terre Haute and spent seven years as attached to the Federal Bureau of Prisons over there. So he has quite a lot of experience working in the corrections environment in a law enforcement capacity there at the federal prison in Terre Haute. From that assignment, he came back here and spent the remaining of his career from 2014 to 2022 as a resident special agent here, right here in Bloomington. And if you talk to just about any police officer, local police officer here, and you say Cory's name, they know who he is. And the reason for that is Cory was very active as an FBI agent here in assisting local agencies with investigations or resources that he could acquire and bring to them from the federal level. And I've been lots of places, and I rarely have found an FBI agent so involved in the local community, particularly in the law enforcement community, as much as Cory was here with the local officers here in the Bloomington and Monroe County area. From there, he spent a short period of time as a school resource officer right here in Monroe County. So he's got a little bit of experience doing that. And then he has moved on, and he is a owner-in-chief operating officer of Apex Security, which is a new startup company here, a local company here. So with that resume, it was easy to see why we looked to Cory to take this. And I will give you a little bit of his educational level. Cory has a bachelor's of general studies and a master's in secondary education from IU. So everything about Cory is local. His resume, I think, speaks for itself, and his education level is, I think, more than we could have expected. So as I've introduced him, I wanted to thank several people here for helping us get to that. The council, obviously, was beneficial, and I want to thank the commissioners for approving the ARPA funding at their last meeting, which helped us get over the hump to do this. And it was a long process, and it took a lot of people, but Jeff and Molly helped me tremendously writing up this contract, and that was the final contract that we used. Made a few adjustments here. Just yesterday, I met with Angie and Greg Crone. We went over the showers building, looking at office space, and everybody, I'm just trying to show you that there were so many people involved to this day, and we're grateful for it. I think we've got a great candidate going forward. I've already got a message into Scott Carnegie from DLZ to make that introduction. It was remarking today, I just emailed him the Indiana jail standards for him to start reviewing and say, "You better know these, my friend." But he doesn't even start until January 1, but I thought I might give him a little bit of homework assignment. So we're really excited to hit the ground running with Cory, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to him for just a few minutes. If you have any questions, here's the guy to direct them to. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. As I mentioned to the council last night, I really don't have anything prepared to speak about, but I tend to talk really fast, and I tend to talk a lot, so I'll try to avoid those two things. I'm just super excited about the opportunity. I think it's a lot of excitement going forward. I think there's a lot of progress, so I'm excited to be part of the team, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'd be glad to answer any questions about my background, my education, or anything you guys have questions about.
Yeah, it is wonderful to meet you, and congratulations. And I think just from what we learned in the pony training, that it's going to take more than you. And so I just want you to be sure to let us know, and anyone else in the department, of course, what you need going forward in terms of assistance and support, because it is going to take more than one person to do this job, and we do know that, and we're very well aware of that. So just keep us posted, and we look forward to working with you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, too. One of my greatest prizes, almost every job I had in the FBI, whether it was Miami, Terre Haute, or getting back to Bloomington, I was assigned to a task force, which was, I love the fact that I worked with state police and local police, and then FBI supervisors and headquarters and different task forces around the country. So that's very normal to me, and I definitely appreciate the fact that it's going to be way more than a one-person job, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And I'm not an expert on this at all, but it's my impression that county jails are a bit different than federal prisons as well. And so I hope that you can get out and see some of the new things that DLZ has been building. We recently were on a trip to Columbus, Ohio, to see the Franklin County Jail, and there are new things going on, clearly.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, too. The prison I was assigned to in Terre Haute, back in the early 2007 to 14, I guess it was, was built in 1938. So I was just talking to Greg earlier about some of the technology issues here, this office, and we had to work those kinds of things over there, too. It was kind of hard to get the internet speed up, you know, a prison built that old, when you were a quarter mile off the highway to get it back to your office even. So yeah, there's definitely new things to be learned, new ways of doing things that are new and improved, so I look forward to that as well.
Well, and as I was looking through the claims that we have to approve every week, for this week, just the energy usage in the current Justice Building, which is more than the jail, I realize, it's tremendous. And so making sure that we have things that are environmentally friendly is also important. So, but welcome, again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thanks. We'll see you soon.
So just to finish up, we'll be putting together some plans to kind of get this process started. And I already mentioned, you know, obviously, Scott Carnegie of DLZ is going to be a very, very important partner in this. But there are some things that we're going to do here locally with our facility and with Cory, and I think I mentioned some of those things, to get him familiarized with what that looks like over there, you know? And I think maybe the important part of that is seeing what not to do so much as what is to do, because I want him to get a real good feel for that facility and how things are laid out. So we're going to put together a plan of kind of getting him acclimated with how it's working now, and I think that'll give him a better insight into, you know, what we're looking for to kind of depart from in many different aspects. And there's some good things that we're doing, too. And what I want to assure the commissioners and the council and anybody that's listening is, I know how important this is to everybody in this community, and so does the sheriff. So we will keep you very, very posted on what we're doing, how we're doing it, when we're doing it, those types of things. So I look forward to frequent communication with the sheriff's office, and particularly Cory, as he goes through this position, so.
And I will note for the public, too, we still don't have the final reports back on the Thompson site, so we're not ready to sign on the dotted line. We still don't know where that's going to be located.
Sure.
But we're not trying to delay anything on that. We're trying to do our due diligence.
Right.
Okay. Yep, it's a process, isn't it?
It is. And it's not fast, and I know that's frustrating for some people in the community that we're not moving forward, but this is such a huge project, and it's going to have such long-term implications for everyone in this community. We want to do it right. And so that's where we're coming from, and it sounds like we're all in alignment on that, and that's wonderful.
Well, I think a large step of that is having Cory on board to help, from the sheriff's office side, partner with you and the council and the community in as we take those either giant leaps or baby steps, whatever they happen to be that particular day or week or month, but we're moving towards it at least. And I think this is a big step for us. I know that, so, okay.
Great.
Won't take any more of your time. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other department with a department update today? Seeing none, let's move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. We ask that speakers limit their thoughts to three minutes, and please state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. And I see Jim Shelton has his hand up virtually, so could we start with Mr. Shelton, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Jim Shelton. Just want to update the community and you guys on the CASA program. I know you know, but CASA is a court-appointed for any special advocates and their volunteers who are recruited and trained by the CASA professionals to work with children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. So typically, the child will be removed from the parent's home because it's not considered safe, placed in a foster situation, or perhaps with relatives. And then the court will make a decision whether or not officially that child should be designated as a child in need of service, so-called a CHINS. This year, then the CASA program would be asked to provide a volunteer for the child or children that have been removed. This year, in 2023, the court, usually Judge Harvey, have requested support for 394 children with just a couple weeks to go. 394 children this year have needed a volunteer. The good news is the CASA program has been able to provide 352 of those from their 100-plus CASAs. Bad news is, we still have 42 children right now who are waiting for CASA to become available to be assigned for them. So I want to make sure the public is aware, we have a training session coming here starting February 6 and run through March 7. It will be in the afternoon. As far as I know, this is the first time they've tried this schedule. They're hoping to make this training and therefore the volunteer opportunity available to more people. It'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1 to 4 in the afternoon. So if this would work for anybody out there who's been thinking about being a CASA but couldn't arrange to get to the evening trainings, this would be a good change. The applications for this year's training in the winter will be January 24. So if you want more information about it, you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link. There'll be a drop-down page that has information. You can select off the menu, orientation and training, and get the details if you can't remember the date and time I just told you. There's also the opportunity to go to a frequently asked question page and learn a lot of the details that might be something you would want to know to see if this volunteer opportunity will work for you. Or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member. So again, we need people to help cover these 42 children, and sadly, they will just keep coming. So thank you very much for the opportunity to spread that word to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, for always being such an incredible advocate for the CASA program. You do a lot for the community. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment? Seeing none, let's move on.
I move approval of the minutes for December 6, 2023.
Second. Did you have any corrections or comments?
I did not.
I didn't either, so call for a vote on the approval of the minutes from December 6, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2 to 0. Next item.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable for December 13, 2023, and payroll for December 15, 2023.
Second, and we have Mrs. Miller. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for December 13, 2023 totals $2,165,091.39. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for December 15, 2023 totals $1,341,445.31 in direct costs, and the remaining $568,849.65 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $1,910,294.96.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
I will say that there were a lot of payments for guardian ad litem, and one of the roles that CASA volunteers do is they mean that we don't have to hire all these guardian ad litem, even though they're needed. It's another way that people can perform public service. So I really appreciate what the CASA folks are doing to help us out here. Is there any public comment on this item, on the claims or payroll? Seeing none, call for a vote on the approval of the claim docket accounts payable December 13, 2023, and payroll December 15, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2 to 0. I will note for the record that we have no reports this week.
All right. We have an item that's not on our agenda that should be, which was item G from our December 6 meeting on the ARPA policy revision number 8. We have moved... Oh, it is still on our agenda. I'm going to move that we continue item G. It wasn't in the last version I saw. I'm going to move that we continue item G to December 20.
I'll second that. Is there any comment? Any public comment at all on that?
Commissioner Jones wants to be here, and we just did receive the updated information that we were asking for, so I appreciate that we got that in a timely manner, so.
Yes, yes. And I will say she's one of our folks that have been involved for a good while with parks and things like that, so we will move to delay that. All those in favor moving this to December 20 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So for new business, we have item A. I move approval of the syringe service program renewal. Fund name: Health. Fund number: 1159, and the amount of $20,000.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Kelly back to talk with us.
Yes. So this is just a request for a renewal. This is a longstanding program. Our syringe service program is a collaboration between the Indiana Recovery Alliance and the Health Department. So the primary services that we offer are harm reduction, HCV testing, HIV testing, medical care, and referral services. The Board of Health did vote to approve the renewal of this program on November 16, and they are requesting that the commissioners approve as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
None. There are a number of items on this agreement that are not funded by Monroe County directly, but so this is a wonderful program. I'm so glad that the Health Board supports continuing it, and the department is supporting it, and amazing work. When you look at the outreach and the number of people who have been referred for testing and other services is impressive. I am so grateful that we are in Monroe County and that we're doing this work. So thank you, and thanks to everyone at IRA for everything they do.
Yes. I'd like to read just a couple of sentences that we got from Dr. Clark Britton, who's our health officer. He says, "We know that SSP programs work. They prevent disease transmission by providing harm reduction education and safe supplies. They save lives by providing overdose education in the lock zone. They provide a path to treatment for those who are ready. According to the Centers for Disease Control, people who use SSP programs are five times more likely to enter treatment and three times more likely to stop using the drugs than those who do not participate in such a program." This is saving lives. You know, we just heard from Mr. Shelton with CASA. We know that illicit drug use disrupts families, and so anything that we can do to change that path, I think, is worthwhile. So I'm very, very proud to support this.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm so glad you read that section, because when I read that, I kept thinking about why that is true, that it works that way, and I think it's because people feel part of the community and they feel supported, and that's why this is so important to do.
Yes. As I listen to my colleagues from the Health Department, a couple of whom are also here in attendance, relationships are so critical for recovery. And I think that you start to trust people with this range services program. These are people who often themselves are in recovery. They understand what people need to go through, and so, yes, I'm very proud that we are doing this.
Yes, and thank you. The employees do a fabulous job, and I don't think that's probably recognized enough, so I do appreciate, because they work so hard. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the syringe service program renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2 to 0. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Those were emphatic ayes. All right. I move approval of the Green Business Monroe County Solid Waste Management Letters of Agreement. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000, and the amount of $4,800.
Second, and we have Mr. Kreider here with us today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. This request is to approve the annual agreement with the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for recycling pickup at the following locations: Showers Building, U Services Bureau, Justice Building, Health Building, Courthouse, Curry Building, and Community Corrections. Total amount: $4,800.
Yes. Thank you. Comments or questions?
Glad we do this, and utilizing the Green Business Network makes sense.
Yes, yes. I totally agree. Is there any public comment on this item? I normally wouldn't do this, but I think that Mr. Kreider is one of the people that built some of the equipment that we use here in this building.
I did.
For recycling, and it's lovely, so, yes.
Yeah, the most elegant recycling bins ever.
Thank you.
Show them off.
With that, I'll call for a vote on the Green Business Monroe County Solid Waste Management Letters of Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement with Computer Systems, Inc., CSI Land Records Management System. This is a renewal. Fund name: Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. Fund number: 1189, and the amount of $15,840.
Second, and we have Recorder Swain. Good morning.
Good morning. The Land Records Management System is the system that we use to record documents and take payments in the recorder's office with Computer Systems, Inc., or CSI. We have an integrated system that allows electronic recording from four different vendors. Our back files of historical documents are integrated into the system as we digitize these older documents and make them available to the public. We use their imaging software to bring the documents that we scan into this system. And this is a renewal of our annual system support agreement and imaging software support agreement with CSI. The terms and conditions of the agreement have been reviewed by our Technical Services Department Director, and Greg is comfortable with you signing this as Commissioners if you vote to do so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Comments or questions?
None. Thank you.
No, and it's nice that you've worked with Mr. Crone on this. I appreciate that, yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Computer Systems, Inc., CSI Land Records Management System Renewal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 2 to 0. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
I move approval of Centerstone Memorandum of Understanding for Reentry Program. Fund name: Justice Partners SIM 93.788. Fund number: 8160, and the amount of $60,000.
I'll second, and we have Mr. Williams here with us. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. I'm here for approval of a grant, or for an MOU with a grant from the Indiana Office of Court Services for the sequential intercept model. It's a MOU between us and Centerstone, which allows us to start to reduce the barriers that our clients have in getting into treatment. One of the barriers is that we make the referrals and then ask the client to go to another agency to get those assessments. We're going to eliminate that barrier by bringing Centerstone into our office two days a week to do those assessments right in the office, maybe hopefully immediately as they come in from the court sentencing. In addition to that, the grant also covers 50% of the time of a recovery coach from Centerstone to work with some of those clients. So the clinicians doing those assessments will determine the highest-risk clients and make the referral to a recovery coach, in addition to any of the other services that the client may be getting from Centerstone.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, it's a great idea, and I appreciate the work on this. I think it fits in really well with the work you're doing with IRAC, and I think all of this will fit very well together. of this will fit very well together. It's just another great level of support, and I think you're right. It's a barrier that could be avoided.
And I read this morning that the old Dunn Hospital down in Bedford is going to be turned into a treatment facility run by the Indiana Center for Recovery. And of course, there's a unit here as well. So I'm really pleased to see that other treatment options are going to be available soon and close by. So that was encouraging. Ms. Purdy?
As an old probation officer, I just have to say this is...
You're not that old. Sorry.
As a prior probation officer.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
I just have to say, this is, I think, amazing. The ability to have, to close that gap between your office and the treatment provider is, I think, is immense. And so I think this is the coolest thing I've heard for a while, so.
Yeah, we already have three appointments scheduled for tomorrow.
Oh, we better sign this.
No pressure.
Yeah.
So is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Centerstone MOU for Reentry Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for working on this.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the Sheriff Merit Deputy Bargaining Unit Agreement.
Second, and we have Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is a agreement that will begin January 1, 2024, and end December 31, 2027. We've had contracts with our, this collectively bargained for a while, so I'm just going to go over the three highlights that we put in here, one of which is not really substantive, and the other two are. The one that's not substantive is the inclusion of the Canaan Officer as a specialty. While it was never in the contract before, it was always in the salary ordinance that way. So this is just reflect, this is just making the salary ordinance in this contract more congruent, or more congruent, not incongruent. More congruent.
Good.
The biggest difference in my mind is how we are looking at specialty pay, and we're looking at specialty pay a little bit different because of the Fair Labor Standard Act, which we believe requires us to include that in overtime. So instead of giving that a lump sum, we are putting that into the, those into the hourly rates. The amount of those have not materially changed, other than it was, used to be reflected as $500 a year, now it's, I think, 24 cents an hour. So those kind of things, I believe we did add a few specialties, drone operators, and the, is the big one that pops into my mind. I know there was one more that is just escaping me. Certified Polygraph Officer and Drug Recognition Officer. I will note for the public that the Drug Recognition Officer does not recognize substances, but recognizes attributes to people who have been arrested to determine whether, you know, they had, they are either on a drug or need a drug for use. So that's part of that process. It's not, oh, what's this stuff in the car? It's looking at the person and seeing if they have any, if they are on any substances, and then being able to treat them more appropriately depending on what they find. So that's, that's, that was one of the more interesting things I learned while negotiating this contract. And the final is how uniforms are paid. We understand that the new office, that the cost of uniforms have increased over, due to the pandemic. However, we felt that the annual uniform allowance was perfectly acceptable and a perfectly appropriate amount for people who had been there for a year. However, it was not going to cover the, kind of the bulk cost of when someone gets hired, they need to have all this equipment. So this contract keeps the uniform allowance for people with one year of service or more. However, it provides them with three uniforms, essentially three uniforms for when they get hired on, to kind of avoid that upfront increase in cost that we know has occurred in this market based upon the need to buy a whole set as opposed to just needing to replace items as they get damaged. So those are kind of the three big changes to the contract. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't have questions. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and it's really nice to see a multi-year agreement as well. I think the one thing I would say to put a bookmark in for next time the negotiations occur in 2027 would be if there's an interest, or maybe more of an interest then than there is now, but if there's an interest in providing some specialty pay for bilingual officers.
Well, I will tell you, we had a, we all thought that that's a great idea. Our, the concern, and I think if we ever got over this, I'd be, everybody would be willing to amend this contract. The concern is how do, how do you do a certification of whether someone is bilingual? We were struggling finding an objective way to confirm bilingual.
Okay.
So if we ever found one of those, I think this and the jail contract.
Great.
And I guess in my sidebar, any county employee, I think the county would benefit from that kind of, that kind of service and that kind of expertise within departments. We just couldn't figure out how to confirm that, in an objective way, how to confirm that people were bilingual or not. I mean, that was, that was the only hurdle that we couldn't cross.
There is. Language, the Foreign Service years ago came up with levels of language ability, and it ranges from zero to, I think it's a five. And five is a native educated speaker of that language. We often use the example that Henry Kissinger, who was eloquent, eloquent man, was not a five because he still had an accent. But he certainly was, was, would have been in this situation capable of carrying on any conversation needed for that. So I think what is needed is we need to find a contract for somebody who can do the testing using that or some other comparable thing, and decide what the level of proficiency is that's needed in these situations.
Maybe with IU.
Wait, wait. IU has the most, it's one of the premier foreign language training universities in the country. And so, huh?
All right. We will follow up on that, and then we will bring the question to probably you and the council as to whether this is a contractual change or whether this would be a salary ordinance personal policy handbook change to determine whether you want to scope it only for our law enforcement, or whether you think this is valuable for any county employee. I think that, that's the other question that we didn't tackle.
Sure. And I think, I think the other thing to consider is what languages we would, we would give priority to because it matters. I mean, this community is so multilingual, and there's so many, I think there's a benefit to any, any other language being spoken. I really do, so.
We could use census track information.
Yeah, so we could work on this. That sounds good. That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. What is the policy with regard to uniforms for part-time people in the jail?
Oh, this isn't...
This is the road.
Oh, this is the road. Okay.
This is not.
Thank you. Okay. So we don't have part-time road deputies. Okay. And what kind of special training background do the drug recognition officers have to have?
Well, there's a certification that they have to get. I don't know precisely off my head who does it, but I, it's pretty intensive. We had a long conversation about all the requirements they had in order to become, to become that. But it's a fairly extensive training program and certification they go through.
We saw that in Franklin County, Ohio, the DRE room at the intake.
At the intake, and then they're new.
It's important, it's important to know if somebody's under the influence and impaired in any way for operating a motor vehicle and for how you handle them. So this is really good to help us.
Yes. Okay, with all of our talking, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Sheriff Merit Deputy Bargaining Unit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Next item?
I move approval of Burgess and Nibley, Inc., Regarding Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Fund name local road and street. Fund number 1169, and the amount of $100,000.
I'll second, and we have both Mr. Cockrell and Ms. Ridge, and I believe that Ms. Ridge also gave us information via email that this would be a federal match, and so the cost to us is not 100,000.
That is correct. It would be an 80-20 split for the county and the city portion. We also have Patrick Martin here with our MPO staff to answer any additional questions. This is required for us to be able to acquire and obtain federal funds for projects. Patrick, if you want to add anything?
All of the urbanized areas are required to have a multiple, well, Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and it must have at least a 20-year forecast. The last Metropolitan Transportation Plan was prepared by the staff ourselves. We completed that in October of 2020. Therefore, it's time that we do the update. And again, this is a required, federal requirement. And the Metropolitan Transportation Plan serves as the foundation for all of your transportation improvement projects, and it also serves as the eligibility for all your federal aid
I will ask, Mr. Cockrell, do we need to amend this since we are not responsible for 100,000 of this cost?
Well, we are responsible. It's reimbursed.
Okay.
So we do pay that out and then get 80% reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Comments or questions?
Well, Mr. Martin, welcome to the courthouse.
Thank you. First time here in seven years.
It's good to see you here.
More than seven years.
Usually I see you in the city council chambers, so it's nice to have you here. So just for the public's edification, what this company is going to do is take into account all of the existing plans, which would include county plans, city plans for roadways, and the Bloomington Transit's recent plant, comp plans, all the comp plans, basically. But then just looking scaling-wise, just looking at that area that's part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary, right?
It would focus on the urbanized area boundary, which has been determined by the Census Bureau. And then it would also look at potential areas of growth within the next 20 to 25 years. In other words, if the urbanized area were to expand, and there are only certain directions it can expand, given car topography, so it would also examine those areas, too. And, I mean, they would be consulting with the Plan Commission on land use, because I'm not familiar with, I'm not versed in on land use. That's just not in my repertoire. But, yes, it's not only the urbanized area, but it's also the fringe areas. I shouldn't call them fringe because it's a matter of how rapidly it grows.
It's subjective. There's no real definition. And so that would be both the city's Plan Commission and the county's Plan Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. I think it's important for the public to understand that, that all of the plans that have been, because over time, I can't tell you how many times we've approved plans to be done, plans for this, plans for that. We're going through the CDO process right now in the county Plan Commission, that that is taken into account and then expanded on with looking ahead for transportation needs, and these are multimodal transportation needs from private vehicles to buses to pedestrians and bicycles and flying cars, because I bet that that's something they're not going to talk about, but they should. So, you know, it's...
Handicap services.
Excellent.
For elderly citizens.
We forgot horses.
Yes, exactly. See? The echequing trails.
Scooters would be involved. Vulnerable road users would absolutely be involved. Vulnerable road users include those with, or strong carriages or what have you.
Right. Children crossing at schools and all of that. Yep, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot. So, yeah, and it's, and it is frustrating. I think you talked about this last time, that, you know, how can we even think about what's going to happen? But, but it's a requirement, so.
Huge changes in technology that have occurred. I mean, 20 years ago, if you had said, oh, there's going to be electric vehicles out on the highway, and that's going to impact pollution levels and all kinds of other things, people would have just thought you were in a science fiction movie kind of thing.
And that roads can be made to not only charge vehicles that are driving, but are parking on those particular roads. That would have, yeah, so.
Yeah, we won't bother Ms. Ridge with that cost. So, so I do have a question, though. And that's come about this year because we learned that Bloomington Transit was receiving money to provide transportation to more densely populated areas, and that that included places like Unionville, Smithville. So will this encompass those more densely populated areas, or is it only the areas around Bloomington, and also does include areas in Ellicsville?
Well, Bloomington Transit's charter is the city, city of Bloomington itself. And then there had been a request that the Bloomington Transit expanded service beyond the city limits, which I believe City Council looked at, examined, and/or approved. It's a matter of feasibility, who will pay. The other, the issue you're probably alluding to is rural transit. Rural transit is funded by the state of Indiana and also the Federal Transit Administration, and by virtue of their funding, more than 50%, greater than 50% of their passenger trips must be outside of the urbanized area. And then it was discovered this year that more than 50% are within the urbanized area, so that causes a conundrum. Rural Transit could be providing right now service to Unionville, or service to, say, Sanders, or Smithville, or what have you. But if it's within the urbanized area, there must be a greater balance of trips generated outside the urban area.
So, but will this plan take into account the things like Smithville and...
Yes, yes, yes. As part of the, what I would call the inventory, they will be doing an inventory of current services. They'll be making an assessment of needs. In other words, is there a need? Is there a demand? Is there a propensity to consume transit in these areas not currently served, or maybe served marginally? They'll be looking at all of that. They'll also look at what I would call a financial forecast. Is it financially feasible? If it's not, who will support the financial feasibility of the operation itself? And then they'll make a set of policy recommendations to not only the commissioners, but also to the MPO Board itself and the city.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then I have a follow-up question for Ms. Ridge. The contract doesn't include the Monroe County representative on there. I assume it's, it's you?
Yeah, Paul and myself have been involved since we started talking about the transportation plan.
I'm just making that assumption, but I thought I'd point that out.
Correct.
Okay.
With all that, is there any public comment on this item? Mr. MG?
Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to say I support this, the work of the MPO and the kind of collaboration between the city and the county on these sort of projects, because it's going to take good communication and a real plan that looks ahead 20 years from both the rural, the fringe, as it's called, and the city to come together and come up with a plan that I think addresses the needs of all Monroe County citizens, no matter where they live. So I'm encouraged by this and this collaboration, which is, I always like to see, and I always give kudos to both entities when we're not working in silos. So I support this. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, I don't know how much involvement it will occur, but I know at the MPO meetings that there's always a representative from INDOT also present at those things. So is there any other public comment? Seeing none. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Burgess and Niple, Inc., regarding, contract regarding Metropolitan Transportation Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
I move approval of the 2024 Material Bid Awards as outlined in the packet.
Is I second, and Ms. Ridge?
So we did open bids on December 6, 2023. This is for the upcoming year of certain supplies that we use throughout the year. Item one is basically aggregate in stone, gravel and sand. We do award it to Rogers Group on Ord Road, Rogers Group in Morgan County, Lincoln Park, and US Ag, basically depending on where we're working at in the county, so we can have the choice of going to the closest facility. On items two, three, and four is paint markings and thermoplastic and removal of those items if needed. We would recommend awarding to Indiana Traffic Services LLC and Accurate Striping Incorporated due to the possibility of quantity shortages or unable to perform the work in a timely manner. And then we award, recommend item number five awarded to CivilCon, being the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder.
Thank you.
And item five is corrugated metal pipe and high-density polyethylene pipe.
You are correct.
Just for the public.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you caught that.
Thank you. It's already been a long day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other comments or questions, Christopher Thomas? Any comments or questions from the public?
Could I clarify something with item four? What we received, we received two different bids, that depending on the length of the, of the project, one would have been a low bid, and the other, or the other would have been a low bid, right? So depending on that length, so what we're doing is we're accepting both, but we will call the one that, that bid the lowest for each project as it comes in. There's also been, along with a lot of other things in this world, some shortages between suppliers as to whether they actually have the materials necessary to perform on time, and so we're going to utilize, if the first one can't perform on time, we'll utilize the second one. So just wanted to make that clear. It's a little different than what we've done in the past, but that's the, the logic in how we're going to move forward, so we keep the bidding process as, as a necessary, and we're being fair to everybody who placed bids into the system. So I think that's what we want to ensure happens, so we wanted to just make sure you were clear and the public was clear on, on why that is ordered the way it is.
Appreciate that. I appreciate also the fact that, that you're looking to be very, not miserly, but careful with how you spend the public's money.
Yeah, we have run into some quantity issues, paint shortages, companies not being able to fulfill the schedules over the last couple of years. Last year, I don't even think we've received bids for this category, so want to give a little bit more flexibility to be able to get the striping done.
Yes, and if anybody's driven county roads at night, you want that striping.
Absolutely.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the 2024 Material Bid Awards. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two to zero. We have no appointments for today. With regard to announcements, we, there's still COVID testing and vaccines available. Please go, you can get the tests at either the Health Department or the Public Health Clinic, and you can get your vaccinations also at the Public Health Clinic. We are still accepting nominations for boards and commissions. We'll be hopefully adding to some of our boards next month. So go to co.mro.in.us to apply. You can also go to that same website to find out when we have virtual office hours. It's on the calendar, and all you have to do is click, and hopefully you can join one of us there. We are continuing to offer blood drives. There's one today from 1:00 to 6:00, and one Friday from 10:00 to 3:00 out at IB Tech in Shreve Hall, and then in January, Wednesday, January the 3rd, right after the New Year's, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Thursday, January the 4th, from 10:00 to 3:00. We, I'll remind people that we have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying for rent and utilities. These are people who are income qualified, you would apply through your township trustee, and also that we have the rural, what do we call it?
Rural Housing Repair.
Thank you.
Yes.
RHR. That is, that is to help people maintain their homes. Again, you would apply through your township trustee, and they have the requirements for application, as well as the ability to help you through that. There's a maximum of $20,000 for that, but it is to go for things like upgrading electricity, your roof, your foundation, things that are permanent structures within, in your home. These are for owner-occupied homes.
And I would add that for residents of, this is for residents outside the city of Bloomington, and for those who live in Perry Township outside the city of Bloomington who wish to apply, should contact the commissioner's office directly.
Thank you. All right. Any other announcements?
I do. I just want to provide an update that on, on Monday, the Ellisville Town Council decided to fund the parallel transit service, but only for three months, which is unfortunate. So hopefully, early in the new year, we're going to have some more discussions about what it's going to take to ensure that we provide transportation services for those folks in our community who need it, and how we're going to accomplish that. This is related to the item that we heard last week for ARPA funding, and we were really hopeful that Ellisville would, would step up and commit for the year, but at least we got three months, so we have a little breathing space. So we're going to have to attack this again long before the deadline, and I appreciate, I think the thing that's been unsaid through all of this is Chris Meyer's hard work. She has been negotiating, providing information, going to meetings, and making sure that everybody's up to speed on what's needed. She's put in a lot of work to make this happen, and, and her dedication to community residences is unparalleled, so I appreciate her hard work, and, and we're going to have, we have more work to do, sorry, Chris, but we have more work to do. But I look forward to it, getting something resolved.
Right. And for, for county residents who use rural transit, hopefully things are in place that it's just seamless for you, you will continue to call the same number for your transportation needs, and again, yes, you're right, Chris Meyer's has just been Herculean effort in all this. Okay, well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. We will be back next week on December 20. We do have several items on our work session. It's now 11:03. Can we get back here by 11:10 to work with the wonderful people from our Health Department?
Yes.
Okay, we will be back in a few minutes. Thanks.